About fifty bucks.
Sun-earned income.
All this meeting in order, roll call please.
David Chandler.
Here.
Joey Gerson.
Here.
Terry Hickey.
Your call has been forwarded to an automated voice messaging system. Six, one participant is now joining.
Do you hear me?
Harry.
I'm here.
Unknown participant is now exiting.
Bill Mosley. Mickey Robinson.
Here.
Henry Siemens.
Here.
Brian Simmons.
Here.
Robert Van.
You've been muted. To unmute yourself, press star six.
Michael Woodley. Michael Woodley.
Mr. Mayor, would you lead us in a word of prayer?
Our heads. Dear most gracious heavenly father, thank you so much for this day that you have blessed us with Lord and Lord, we just ask you to bless this commission in making the decisions for this county, Lord, but also most of all, make the decisions that are good on thy side. Lord, we ask you to be with the Knoll family tonight, in the next few days, Lord, and that you just put your loving arms around them and help them through this grieving process that they're going through. Lord, we ask you to be with our servicemen throughout this world, Lord, and just be with them and keep them safe. We ask you to forgive us of our sins and those sin against us. Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Item number three, approval of February 23rd meeting minutes. A motion by Mickey, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Roll call please.
David Chandler.
Yes.
Joey Gerson.
Yes.
Terry Hickey. Terry Hickey. William Maxwell.
Yes.
Bill Mosley.
Yes.
Mickey Robinson.
Yes.
Henry Siemens.
Yes.
Brian Simmons.
Yes.
Robert Van Winkle.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Change your vote? Not, motion carries. Item number four, Committee A report. Mr. Maxwell.
Make a motion. Make a motion.
Carolyn.
More on item four there, pal.
Committee A report, Mr. Maxwell.
I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. First item was some budget amendments. I'm gonna go through those. We had several budget amendments to deal with for Committee A. I'll read through those and then we'll handle those at the end. First resolution was for general fund, Fund 101. It'd be a credit to the commission, line 191 by $3,900. Line 201 self security by $150. And we would debit line 309, $4,050. And that would be, that's a contract with other agencies for grants. So no money out of fund balance on that one. It was, that was general fund. The total was $4,050. Next item, solid waste, or I'm sorry, the next account was Fund 116, solid waste. Be line 147, truck drivers, 4,300. 201 self security, 200. Be debiting 210, unemployment by 200. Line 336, maintenance on the truck, 4,000. Line 212 Medicare by $50. And then line 399, other contracted services. Been increased by 4,000 for the lease of the truck, an increase of 14,000 for Southern Central. That's a total of 78,350 out of fund balance for that.
Did the Southern Central go up or were we just more garbage?
Believe it was an increase and.
It actually went down, you know, from what we were. We were at 48 and we're now at 4650. And it's, a lot of it is an increased garbage.
Then they come down to 4650 and then they went back up to 48?
No, it went from 48 to 4650.
Then they come down to 4650.
Right.
That's what it is presently now.
Yes, sir.
Alright, so the next, also looking in solid waste, we had some amendments from revenues. Payment in lieu of taxes, local utilities would increase by 1,400. Tire tax for disposal, 1,400 also. Sale of recycled material increased by 2,400, sale of equipment, 1,000, and other state revenues, 25,000. And that would increase to go into fund balance at 31,200. Next fund is ambulance service, Fund 118. Line 131, medical personnel increase by 46,000. 187 overtime by 9700. 201 self security by 2,000. 204 retirement by 750. 212 Medicare by 500. And we would debit line 735, health equipment by 750. And line 790, other equipment by 500. And out of fund balance would be 58,700. And guys, these are to cover us through the rest of the year, projections for the rest of the year. And we did have one also in ambulance fund, 118. Would be a debit to local utilities, 14,189. And it would add that to the fund balance, 14,189. Like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve all those fund, oh, I'm sorry, to approve all those budget amendments.
Motion to approve, Mr. Maxwell, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Chandler. Roll call please.
David Chandler.
Yes.
Joey Gerson.
Yes.
Terry Hickey. William Maxwell.
Yes.
Bill Mosley.
Yes.
Mickey Robinson.
Yes.
Henry Siemens.
Yes.
Brian Simmons.
Yes.
Robert Van Winkle.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Alright, next item for Committee A, the sheriff's department presented a list, as you will find in your documents, a list of weapons that were departmental surplus as well as court-awarded confiscated weapons from trials. There's a list there, there'd be 10 county-owned weapons that are surplus. And then looks like 26 total, so about 16 confiscated weapons. But altogether, they would like to have approval to surplus these. I think their intent is to use the sale of these weapons to make some purchase of some armored vests for the department. I'd like to make that in form of motion to accept this as presented the.
Have something to add?
Surplus weapons.
Motion, Mr. Maxwell, a second, by who? Mickey? Roll call please.
David Chandler.
Yes.
Joey Gerson.
Yes.
William Maxwell.
Yes.
Bill Mosley.
Yes.
Mickey Robinson.
Yes.
Henry Siemens.
Yes.
Brian Simmons.
Yes.
Robert Van Winkle.
Anyone wish to change your vote? Not, motion carries. Mr. Maxwell?
That's all I have for Committee A. Thank you.
Item number five, notary approval for Carolyn Delon.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we're not gonna make Carolyn Delon.
Motion, Mr. Mosley. Hear a second?
Second.
Second by Brian. Roll call please.
David Chandler.
Yes.
Joey Gerson.
Yes.
William Maxwell.
Yes.
Bill Mosley.
Yes.
Mickey Robinson.
Yes.
Henry Siemens.
Yes.
Brian Simmons.
Yes.
Robert Van Winkle.
Yes.
Well, wish to change your vote? Not, motion carries. Item number six, notary approval for Baffey Gerson.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Maxwell, a second, by Mr. Simmons. Roll call please.
David Chandler.
Yes.
Joey Gerson.
Bernie. Can I vote for that? Abstain.
William Maxwell.
Yes.
Bill Mosley.
Yes.
Mickey Robinson.
Yes.
Henry Siemens.
Yes.
Brian Simmons.
Yes.
Robert Van Winkle.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change your vote? Not, motion carries. Item number seven, old business. Any old business? Item number eight, new business.
Chairman, I do have a couple of things. One is, is I would like to schedule a Committee B meeting for March the 31st. Randy Yokes has got a few items that he needs to bring before Committee B. And if we could, if the 31st for Committee B would work at 4:30?
What was, what was those dates again?
The 31st of March. So if we could, we'll schedule that and then we'll advertise, of course, as normal, and we'll have that at 4:30 in the afternoon. Second thing is, we have a beer board position open. Mr. Johnny Guy had resigned from that and I would, I need to also appoint, reappoint, I'm sorry. I need to reappoint, first, we need to reappoint William Maxwell and Henry Siemens, and I would present the reappointment to the commission.
Who'd you say the first was?
William Maxwell and Henry Siemens for reappointment to the beer board.
They're in action.
That makes that motion.
Motion, Mr. Chandler, hear a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Simmons, roll call please.
David Chandler.
Yes.
Joey Gerson.
Yes.
William Maxwell.
Stain.
Bill Mosley.
Yes.
Mickey Robinson.
Yes.
Henry Siemens.
Abstain.
Brian Simmons.
Yes.
Robert Van Winkle.
Yes.
What was the number?
X with two abstain.
Carries.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to also, for the beer board to replace Mr. Johnny Guy, I'd like to appoint Mr. Mickey Robinson. I submit that name to the commission, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve Mickey Robinson for beer board.
Mr. Maxwell, hear a second? Second, Mr. Chandler. Roll call please.
David Chandler.
Yes.
Joey Gerson.
Yes.
William Maxwell.
Yes.
Bill Mosley.
Yes.
Mickey Robinson.
Stain.
Henry Siemens.
Yes.
Brian Simmons.
Yes.
Robert Van Winkle.
Yes.
Motion carries.
I have no further new business, but our attorney, Mr. Upchurch, would like to talk to you about the sessions, Judge.
I know, I know there have been some questions raised recently about compensation in Van Buren County's obligation to fund the new general sessions judge's position, if in fact, the General Assembly elects to separate the consolidated judicial district of Van Buren County and White County. We are in the only district in the state of Tennessee where a two-county consolidated general sessions judge district exists. We're the only county in the state of Tennessee that doesn't have their own general sessions judge. So of course, there's legislation now, it's actually an uncodified public act, but legislation is being considered at our request by the General Assembly at this time. If you could pass that over there to them. Currently, compensation for the general sessions judge in this county and in White County is based upon a distribution of a combined salary. Because these two counties are combined, that moves the White County and general sessions judges judicial position into a separate classification. The general sessions judges are classified in Tennessee by population. There's seven classifications. Van Buren County is in the seventh class, the lowest class, 10,000 or less is the deadline for a Class VII. Of course, all of you know, or most of you know, I serve as general sessions judge in Bledsoe County. We're a Class VI county, and the only reason we're a Class VI county is because we get to count the prison. The prison population is included in our census, and that's moved my county up one classification, so I'm familiar with what the compensation is for judges. The statute I provided to you breaks down how general sessions judges are compensated in the state. There's a base salary, and as you can see, the base salary for the general sessions judge in a Class VII county is $20,000. Now, that's somewhat inaccurate. If you read through the rest of the statute, you'll see that there are cost of living adjustments that occur each and every year and are applied to that. That statute, I believe, was enacted in the 1990s, so the base salary for a Class VII general sessions judge exceeds $20,000. Our general sessions judge in White and Van Buren County, they have additional jurisdictions, or he has additional jurisdictions. He has divorce jurisdiction, which is sometimes called domestic relations jurisdiction. He has probate jurisdiction, and he has juvenile jurisdiction. And if you look over on, two pages over, on page three, I guess, bottom of page two into page three, the statute discusses salary supplements, and there are different amounts paid for each of those jurisdictions, but if you notice, that is capped at $10,000. So even though if you added those supplements together, it would exceed $10,000, the general sessions judge is capped on those supplements at $10,000. So that's in addition to the base salary. I have, I have the same, I don't have probate jurisdiction, but I have jurisdictions in a Class VI level that caps my supplement at $10,000 also. So I receive the same supplement. My base salary as general sessions judge in Bledsoe County is about three times over what's provided in this statute. The base salary has migrated up with cost of living increases over those number of years to about, I think it's around $70,000 on the base salary for me. I then get, of course, the supplement, and the supplement is not subject to the cost of living increase, and then that gives me my total salary as general sessions and juvenile judge in Bledsoe County. I called the AOC today because Mayor Wilson wanted me to speak to you about a final dollar amount that Van Buren County would be assessed for a general sessions judge's position. CTAS, you can normally go to CTAS and you can find out what your compensation is as county commissioners, what Mayor Wilson receives here in Van Buren County. But if you go to CTAS, CTAS refers you specifically for general sessions judges to the administrative office of the courts, AOC. So I contacted this afternoon the individual who calculates all the salaries, and I think her name is Rachel Harmon, I'm not sure, but I left a voicemail at about 1 o'clock for her to return my call today, but she hasn't. I can extrapolate somewhat from what I receive as general sessions judge and what I believed the general sessions judge in Van Buren County would receive. If I'm correct on this and my calculations are right, the general sessions judge's base salary will be in the range of 50 to 55,000, and his or her supplement will be another $10,000. So if my calculations are correct, it will be approximately 60 to 65,000 for the total compensation that the general sessions judge will receive. There are some individuals who have already expressed interest in the position. They have also reached out to the AOC or other officials, and they also concur, and they believe that's what the total salary would be. Now, in addition to that, the general sessions judge will participate in the Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System. The county's obligation on my retirement contributions for Bledsoe County is approximately $3,000 to $4,000 a year in addition to my salary. I don't know actually what it will be here in Van Buren County. I can't imagine it would be a lot more than that, but I don't want to represent to you that I understand the workings of the Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System and their actuaries. It's a mystery to me. So you'd have that obligation. There's also, and I'll pass this around for your benefit, there's also an obligation counties have to fund a general sessions judge's attendance at seminars. And the way that takes place in Tennessee, the general sessions judges conference has two seminars. They have a two-day midwinter seminar that takes place in Nashville every February, and then they have a annual general sessions judge conference that normally takes place the third week of September, and it's Wednesday, Thursday, and Fridays. And these take place, they rotate among the grand divisions in the state. Usually, they're in Memphis or Jackson in the western portion, they're in Nashville in the middle portion of the middle division, and then in the eastern division, they'll alternate between Chattanooga, Knoxville, and the tri-cities. And of course, the statute requires the attendance fee to be paid by the county, mileage for transportation to be paid by the county, and of course, the expenses for lodging and what have you, those have to be paid by the county as well. And those vary, those vary year to year. I guess it depends somewhat on the taste of the judge and some things of that nature, but they'll vary from year to year. Currently, it's my understanding that our contribution to the judge's salaries are approximately $41,000. I've seen the fiscal note information from the Tennessee General Assembly. They have erroneously assumed that Van Buren County and White County will be the same classification for compensation for judges when they're divided. That's not true. White County's position will remain, it should remain a full-time position. Even if it remained a part-time position, it would be a Class IV, it may be still a Class III, and I'm not certain what the population is of White County to speak to that. But, but their compensation will be, or their expenditures and their obligation will be close to what they show on this fiscal impact note for Van Buren County. They've reversed those. Our general sessions judge's costs will not be as much as White County's. In fact, it will be a small percentage. It will be a little bit greater than what we're paying now, but certainly, it won't be near the 240-some-odd thousand dollars that they project in this fiscal impact. Now, I don't think they're looking at that over an eight-year period. I don't know if they're including hidden costs for things like a courtroom. The White County general sessions judge has a secretary. That's because he's full-time. Part-time general sessions judges don't have a secretary. They've included some information in here about books and literature and things of that nature. We actually receive our research materials as a part and portion of our conference dues, and those are, I think, $175 right now. We have access as a part and portion of our benefits, free LexisNexis, which is a research search engine for lawyers, so you won't be buying a set of code books, you won't be buying a set of Tennessee jurisprudence for the general sessions judge, because he or she will have access to that through the internet research that we're provided as a general sessions judge. So I reached out to our representative today, and he is attempting to provide me with a more clear fiscal impact picture than what this document reveals, and he acknowledged that the same thing that I saw when I looked at this. He acknowledged that they were equating Van Buren County and White County's expenditures as the same, and apparently did not recognize a different classification that we will find ourselves in. So that's about all the information I can give you at this point, and I may be high, I may have extrapolated high on what the base salary for our general sessions judge would be. It may be less than that. I'm simply taking my salary, what it's increased, and using a similar percentage increase to calculate from the base salary in the 1990s statute to where I think we'll be now here in Van Buren County.
Excuse me, this is Megan from the comptroller's office. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Are you guys aware that this bill was taken off notice on March 10th?
I was told that it was taken off notice. It was actually in the House, Paul Sherrill was beckoning in the House.
Right, and he took it off notice on March 10th.
Yeah, he was supposed to put it back. I just heard from her just a little while ago, Senator Bowling, and she is unaware of that, so.
She's unaware of what?
That it was taken off notice in the House.
It was never calendared in the Senate, though. It hasn't moved since February 22nd. So as far as we're aware as of now, this bill is not gonna go through.
Guess we'll just have to double-check tomorrow, maybe we can get hold of speaker. Okay.
Is any questions from the audience?
Got a question.
Bill Mosley, District 2. Like I asked all the county commissioners if they got an email today from Hansel Moore concerning a bus that Van Buren County was considering donating? And he wanted us to donate to him?
I got.
American Legion?
Yeah, I got that email yesterday.
What's that about?
It's a good question. I got that email yesterday. I emailed him back and said it was discussed on.
I emailed him back and said it was discussed on Committee B a few months ago, and it was decided not to do anything with it, to leave it for the senior citizens. I haven't heard anything from him since.
Speaker Sexton, and it was, it was, and I don't know the correct terminology on this, but in the subcommittee that was considering it, because Senator Bowling perhaps had some hesitation about advancing it, they pulled the bill out. But Speaker Sexton says that he can advance the bill with no problem if that's our desire. And he indicated that Mayor Wilson had called him and asked him to do that, and that's what he intended to do. So I do not think that the bill is dead, and I do not think that the bill cannot be considered. It can be considered according to Speaker Sexton's comments to me.
Questions from the audience, Zoom, or anybody can have any questions?
If I receive the call tomorrow from the AOC, and I get the exact numbers, I will send those. I've got everyone's email address, and I'll send that to you tomorrow.
I think in this, when we first learned of the amount there, and I think we were actually in a Committee A meeting when Betsy brought that up, I was unaware that, I think we all were unaware, of course, that the legislature, the legal staff there had come up with this estimated note, or fiscal note for this bill, which ranked it in 200, you know, better than $200,000. And then, of course, if you look in the bullet point number four of that, and that'd be House Bill 1048, 1196, and as Howard pretty well explained that, you know, there's a lot of difference between White and Van Buren County. And I think they took what the total that they spend, counting what we're spending and what White County is spending currently, and added those together, and that's where they come up with that. And then they figured that out and took off some money here and there, and come up with And then, of course, as we looked at this a couple of years ago, I think it was when we first done that, and then was when we submitted it, or actually a little over a year ago, not two years ago. That was right before COVID, and of course, they left the session there and then came back in June, but they didn't do anything other than budgetary issues at that time, I think, best I can remember. But with that, and of course, when we look at what the law is, or what Howard quoted you there on the base salaries and everything, which is what we figured, I think we left out the percentage of growth over the last several years when you first look at that. And I think, actually, I think the commission could set it at this 200 and something, if they wanted to. But I know nobody wants to go that far or anything of that nature. I think it's just a decision whether or not you want to go, it'd be up to y'all, whether or not you want to keep advancing the bill the way it is right now, with the possibility of paying probably somewhere around $22,000 more dollars a year, approximately, you know, and based upon the figures that Howard gave us tonight. And that, like you said, is going to be confirmed. I think at that point, we need to decide whether or not, if you want that increase that you, that we could possibly face, or to leave it where it is now. So I think that's the decision that would be for the commission to do.
What do you feel to be the advantage for this county to have her own attorney?
Well, you all have had excellent judges from White County that have served Van Buren County in the 40 years that I've practiced. I started practicing in the early, early 80s. I won't tell you how long because I give away my age, but in the early, early 80s, Judge Hill, Oliver Hill, from White County, was a General Sessions Judge. He retired in 1988, and Gary Dotson was appointed and then elected in 1990. And Judge Dotson served, and is still a practicing attorney, by the way, in White County. He served until 1998. And then Assistant District Attorney General Sam Benningfield was elected, and Judge Benningfield has served from 1998 to the present. And I don't want anyone to think that Judges Benningfield, Dotson, and Hill gave less than their full attention to Van Buren County, or treated Van Buren County as a lesser county or any different, differently from White County. In fact, I think all three of them would tell you, at least in a few elections, that the reason they were elected is because they had the support, the majority of support from the voters in Van Buren County. So they've always provided excellent, competent, prompt, and reliable judicial services to this county. I can speak as a, from the position of a citizen of Bledsoe County, from a lawyer in Bledsoe County, and from the judge in Bledsoe County. It is a benefit to the citizens of the county to have a citizen from your county adjudicating and judging and resolving disputes for people in your county. Judges are supposed to technically not have any idea or preconceived information about litigants that come before them, but that's just impossible in a small county. You always know people. You know people who are struggling, for example. You know folks who, the green books, the statutes may say, you do this to this person, but you know their family, and you know that if you nudge just a little bit in a certain way, that will be more effective and more beneficial to that family in the county than perhaps punishing them or removing a child from them, or placing a child with another family member. And those are examples. I'm speaking from a judge, and judges have hearts, and judges have emotions, and, you know, judges like to help and resolve issues for people in their own county. And the other thing that I see as a benefit in my county, we were like you for years and years. We had an outdated jail. We had a jail that was under a federal court order. We had a jail with limited capacity, and we were forever shifting inmates here and there, and in a form and fashion to try to hold down the cost to the citizens of the county. That doesn't mean that people who needed to be in jail were let out of jail. It just means there were ways to work around that and to accommodate the limited resources we had. Now we have a new jail, now you have a new jail. Those are issues that we don't see as much. But one issue I see, and of course, the sheriff and the clerks have access to be 24 hours a day, and I'm certain they can reach Judge Benningfield as well. But one thing that we deal with a lot is inmates and folks in our jail that have medical emergencies, and that can be a real expense on the county. If we transfer an inmate to a medical facility who has no insurance, and, you know, most people, let's face it, gentlemen, most people that end up in jail probably are going to lose their insurance that they had insurance to begin with. And that can be a real financial burden on the county. So we're able to work around that, anticipate that, do things with significant restrictions and conditions of release that get them back into jail, but also saves taxpayers some money. And I like that aspect of it as well. Also, I'm able to give more days and more time to Bledsoe County because it's my only county. I see circuit judges who ride the circuit that it's hard to spread them out, they get spread kind of thin. I know Judge Benningfield is too. Judge Benningfield has a great deal of work that he does in the juvenile arena with removals from the Department of Children's Services and termination, and that takes a lot of time. I don't mean to say that Judge Benningfield would ever ignore Van Buren County or ever let juveniles suffer and would not protect their deprocess rights, but a judge in this county will have more time to devote to the citizens. Not criticizing Judge Benningfield or the judges before him at all. I've never seen a time when they weren't available to adjudicate and address issues in this county. I'm speaking, again, I'm speaking as a judge and as a citizen of a small county and as a lawyer in a small county. Let me say one other thing. I want to go back and quote my good friend Commissioner Davis in Bledsoe County. I offered an opinion as an attorney that moved into the realm of the commissioner's decision. You all set the policy, the county attorney doesn't. That's up to you. No, it does not. And that is a good point. You would have to employ a youth services officer. Or work something out with Van Buren County, or with White County to continue to use. Mr. Mitchell, I believe, is the youth services officer down there.
Of course, already budgeted. We had that budgeted for years. We do that already.
Separate from the court?
Yes.
Is separate?
Yes.
Our youth services officer in Bledsoe County is paid $22,000 to $24,000 a year. We shared a youth services officer with Sequoia County and our county up until the early 2000s, and then Judge Austin and I decided we would probably do better with separate youth services officers. So it's been funded that way since that date. But Judge Austin and I, when we shared a youth services officer, we, of course, were separate judges in separate counties. We weren't a combined judicial district like White and Van Buren.
Anything else from the commission?
Excuse me, just one minute. I just want to see, I mean, do you all want to go ahead and move forward with that? You don't want to pull it or anything of that nature? You want to go forward with it?
Proposed figure?
I think that's what Howard was hoping to get tomorrow.
What was it?
We're looking at, right now, and based upon Howard's, I figured there just a few minutes ago, we're looking at about a $22,000 difference in what he had, and that's figuring in the percentages over the years of what we're currently paying now. So all total, you're looking at about $22,000 added to the budget. And that's approximate. It's not, it's not a complete figure, of course. I mean, we'd have to wait until after tomorrow, and then it may be something that, I mean, you've already voted on it, and I think it was, what, 2019? And as soon as I get those, I will send them out, and then if you decide to do, to stop it or whatever, we'll go with that time and have a call meeting. We'd have to have a call meeting to do that, since you voted to go forward with it.
If I'm not mistaken, and I'll go back and look at the resolution that you passed, I know I drafted it, I should have brought it tonight, if I'm not mistaken, even if the General Assembly passes this legislation, it's a non-cotified act or a private act, it will require approval by the county legislative body before it's implemented. So they could, in fact, pass that legislation, and you could reject it. You could decide, we're not going to implement that since it's a private act or a non-cotified public act. And I'll look at that and see. And if that's a situation, then you really won't have to say yea or nay tonight or in a week. You can make that decision if the General Assembly enacts the legislation and it comes back to you for approval. But I'll let you know that as well in the email I send out to you.
They need to go ahead and move on with their part of it, though? The state, they need to go ahead and move on with theirs?
They would.
We need action tonight to make that happen, or is it already in progress?
It's already in progress.
We already said it's rolling, but we don't have to do anything else.
Howard, did I understand correctly, we're the only district that's like this in the state, the only shared district?
No, I got a motion adjourned by Mickey. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second, but will. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Be opposed? No, we're adjourned.